Oh, we're on. Surprise. Okay, everybody, good evening. I'm going to call to order the September ninth, 2024 Shelby Township Planning Commission meeting. I'll ask Secretary Moore to please call to roll.
Yes, this evening Chairman Moffett is out and filling in for him is Acting Chairman Turner.
Here, I'm sorry, here.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Ms. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Cassali.
Here.
Mr. Oppone.
Here.
Mr. Luray.
Here.
Chairman Turner, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Raquel. First item on the agenda tonight is approval of our agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next approval of the minutes from the August twelfth meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Tonight we have three site plans under new business, one public hearing and one under old business. First for tonight's site plans is site plan number twenty-four dash sixteen. Adam Newton, Macomb County Department of Roads, five-one-two-three-five Nappy Drive, located north of Twenty-three Mile Road, east of Shelby Parkway, Salt Storage Building. This is a re-review. Come on down, let us know what your plan is and you can ask any questions.
Sure.
Name and address for the record.
Adam Newton, on behalf of Macomb County Department of Roads, one-one-seven South Roseback, Mount Clemens, Michigan, four-eight-zero-four-three.
Okay, go ahead, Adam.
Just, as you know, this is a re-review. Had to go back to the table for some, for the stone veneer on the salt barn over there on Nappy Drive. My apologies.
Yeah, stand in front of the mic if you can. Thanks, Ed.
Just here for the, the re-review here of the salt barn over there on Nappy Drive. We, we went back to, to check out the, the stone veneer here and I got up here on the, the screen and the plans that were submitted. We were proposing to do, the, the bottom portion is twelve foot tall and then the rest is that, is the roof. We were proposing four feet of the stone veneer and then the T-one-eleven above that for the remaining eight with a, with a ledge.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? No?
No.
Okay, this is a re-review. Julie, why don't you go ahead with your review?
Thank you, Chairman. At the last Planning Commission meeting, this was the only issue that was not addressed at that time and the reason why it was postponed at that meeting with the stone veneer at the south portion of the building, we believe is acceptable. Mr. Newton presented three different site plans and this is the one that would be, we would say the best site plan, the best proposal for that elevation.
Okay. Any commissioners have any questions or comments? Hearing none, a motion would be in order?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Snyder.
Move to approve site plan number twenty-four dash sixteen. Adam Newton from Macomb County Department of Roads for the property located at five-one-two-three-five Nappy Drive, parcel number twenty-three-zero-seven dash one-four dash three-seven-six dash zero-zero-nine, generally located north of Twenty-three Mile, east of Shelby Parkway, Salt Storage Building. This approval is subject to submission of final revised site plans addressing all departmental and planning commission review comments.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Snyder, supported by Commissioner Luray. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Luray.
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone.
Yes.
Commissioner Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. You're all set, Adam.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Yep, have a great night. Our second site plan is site plan number twenty-four dash twenty-eight. Munder Zare, Zare's Marathon, four-five-four-four-zero Dequinder Road, located at the southeast corner of Dequinder Road and West Utica. Building addition for a gas station and convenience store. Come on down, sir, give us your name and address for the record. And don't leave until you sign in after two, so go ahead.
Okay. My name is Jim Baur, B-A-U-E-R. My address is one-one-one-eight-nine Willset Court in Sterling Heights, Michigan, four-eight-three-one-four. I'm an architect. I work with Terry Meesel, who's the project architect, and I got the short straw, so that's why I'm here tonight.
Glad to have you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm used to Sterling Heights and they have overhead document camera. I'm assuming you guys don't have one, correct?
No, we, we have it on the, the computer, but we don't have an overhead document.
Okay, you have it on the computer here?
Can they pull it up?
No, they can't.
They can't pull, so no, they don't have it on the computer.
I apologize.
That's fine.
So basically what happened is back in early summer, an intoxicated driver drove into the wall at the, the gas station and so Mr. Zare decided that maybe he would like to take advantage of that situation and just bump out his building to kind of finish that corner off, you know, bring it out about four feet, eight inches. And mostly he explained to me is because when you come into the, the front door there, it's kind of closed and the customers can't really see into the other area where he has retail sales, so he wants to open that up a little bit. And it is kind of tight in there. So, so that's what our proposal is, basically adding about four feet eight by twenty feet six inches across the front. It brings it out in line with the, the part that already sticks out in the front. Not to the point where it's on an angle, but just the flat wall there. And I know since we did these drawings, he's expressed some interest in, we showed two windows, but putting a storefront window across the front to make it look more aligned with what he has there existing. I don't know if there's anything else I could tell you. We're just going to extend the roof out over it and maybe, we talked about maybe putting some drive-in or something to fix it up. Back in two thousand seventeen, we had this grandiose plan of enlarging it and stuff. And it turned out that it wasn't going to be financially feasible with the sewer systems and things like that, so that's where we are today.
I have some questions, but we'll go ahead with Julie's review first. Go ahead, Julie.
Thank you, Chairman. Since this is an existing site, there's not much we can do as far as the setbacks. So they are going to require a variance from the setback off of West Utica and Dequinder. With that being said, the facade materials that they're proposing for the EFS is also up to the Planning Commission, if that's something that they would accept, especially with the brick requirements in our zoning ordinance. There's also with the setback requirement, there, we require either a screen wall or some sort of landscaping along Dequinder or West Utica. I think in this case, the brick wall, a three-foot brick wall would be excessive and there's not enough room in that area. So maybe a row of hedges would be acceptable. And also the street trees, there's a street tree requirement, but again, there's very limited space on this location. So if we can discuss perhaps a landscaping treatment along those areas, I think that would be beneficial. And then again, up to the Planning Commission as far as the brick requirements for the building in the EFS.
That's what I was looking at on your, your rendering you have here. The building, I think you would agree, needs some TLC.
It does.
And what you're proposing to do is, I think, you correct me if I'm wrong, ethos on the whole building?
You know, Mr. Meesel's the one that told me to put that on there, so I'm assuming that was his plan?
For the whole building?
Yeah.
Because I mean, all it shows is north, north and west, doesn't show south or east.
Right, I was just showing the addition, yeah.
But I have a problem with the entire building being made of this material because it doesn't hold up well over time. I'm more inclined to accept a stone or brick along, you know, four feet along the bottom and then the ethos above it. I just don't think that a whole building of that material would look. The building needs some help and I don't know if that, that would be the best way to make that building look the best it could be.
Right.
That's just my recommendation. I'd like to, personally, I like to see something before I approve it and I'm not sure that this rendering that's here is adequate for my taste, but I'll see what other commissioners have. Anybody else have any questions? Comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mrs. Cassali.
I would just follow along your comments. I would agree with you and I would like to see the enhancements and would like to see the, the facade and maybe in color so we can see what, what might be proposed next time.
Okay.
And that would go along with looking for the landscaping recommendations from the planner. Now, I know the parking lot's very tight, so I don't know about parking lot trees. That was something that was mentioned. But certainly something to spruce up that corner because it is an entranceway right along West Utica coming into our township. And I know you had a plan in two thousand seventeen. It's unfortunate that didn't go through. That would have been a nice addition. But if we can address this, I think that would be one way to fix the building and then fix whatever happened to the front of your building with the car running into it and then bringing that up to a more twenty-first century look.
Okay, I can take that back to the owner and...
Okay. Sounds good.
Sounds good.
All right, anybody else have any questions or comments? So I believe we should postpone this. Yeah, a motion to postpone to the next meeting to give the applicant a chance to address the building materials and the landscaping recommendations proposed by the planner. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll do that.
Anthony?
Yeah, support.
Motion by Commissioner Oppone, supported by Commissioner Snyder to postpone to give the applicant time to propose a new plan with, a new rendering for the building with the materials and the landscaping as proposed by the planner. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Any other questions before you leave?
I don't think so. If, if so, I'll can email Julie.
Get with Julie, yeah, okay.
Thank you very much.
See you soon. Take care.
The next meeting is going to be in October.
Item number three is a conditional rezoning and site plan special land use number twenty-four dash twenty-one for Christopher Campbell, CWP West LLC, five-six-one-five-seven Van Dyke Avenue, located south of Twenty-six Mile Road on the west side of Van Dyke Avenue, a proposed rezoning from C-one local retail business to C-two linear retail business and a special land use request for Mr. Carwash. This time I'll have the secretary read the notice as published for the public hearing.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following conditional rezoning and site plan special land use. Applicant, CWP West LLC, Christopher Campbell, two-two-two East Fifth Street, Tucson, Arizona, eight-five-seven-zero-five. The proposed zoning and use rezoning from C-one local retail business to C-two linear retail business for Mr. Carwash. Location, five-six-one-five-seven Van Dyke Avenue, south of Twenty-six Mile Road on the west side of Van Dyke Avenue. Conditional rezoning and site plan special land use, twenty-four dash twenty-one. Sidwell number twenty-three dash zero-seven dash zero-four dash two-seventy-eight dash zero-fifteen. Legal description is as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, September ninth, two thousand twenty-four at seven PM in the Shelby Township Municipal Building Boardroom, fifty-two-seven-hundred Van Dyke Avenue, Shelby Township, Michigan, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the conditional rezoning and site plan special land use application. The application for the conditional rezoning and site plan special land use may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from eight-thirty AM to five PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act one-ten of two thousand six as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published on August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four in the Macomb Daily. There were eighty-three property owners, four applicants and nine utilities were notified by first-class mail on August twentieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Raquel. Mr. Pecat, does the notice meet all legal requirements as stipulated in local ordinance and state statute?
Yes, it does.
And can you explain the uses under the present zoning and if the special land use request is appropriate to the district?
Sure, so in the current zoning is C-one designated for like a day-to-day shopping and service needs of the surrounding residential areas. Requested rezoning district is C-two linear retail business, which is a little bit more intense than the C-one district. Again, designated to accommodate the commercial needs of the surrounding residential and township. An auto wash facility is permitted by special land use in a C-two district, so the applicant's request is properly made here.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions for the attorney? All right. Did we get any correspondence, Raquel?
We did, Mr. Chair. We did get a correspondence via email and this is from some of the local residents on Crimson Street and Hartwick. They are against the rezoning and... Do you want me to read the names or are we good without that?
Probably read the names, but don't go into necessarily all of it.
Joe and Jenny Carpino, Nick and Tara Lane, Aldo Vitaj, Ash Hook Vangis, Tony and Sandy Pavick.
Okay.
Are against it.
Very good. Thank you. The format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or his or her representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for the request. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will then be open to the public for your comments and then the petitioner will be asked to come up and make any concluding remarks. I see the petitioner is here, ready and willing and eager to go, so come on up and let us know what your request is and why you've stayed, want the rezoning.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Evening.
Commissioners, nice to see you all again. Before I dive into this, just a real quick update on our project that we were here for last time. We did agree to acquire that entire parcel. We had talked about a lot condominium before and that kind of put everything in haywire. So we're working through the purchase agreement. We'll be back at a future hearing here, hopefully in the next month or so.
Okay, good.
So with respect to this project, as you had indicated, we are looking to rezone from C-one to C-two and then get the special land use approvals so that we can operate a new Mr. Carwash. When we were here last time, we, we very quickly introduced you to Mr. Carwash and I wanted to take a little bit more time and, and kind of give you a more, more proper introduction. So Mr. Carwash is a national owner and operator of car washes. We're actually on the precipice of five hundred stores. We should open store number five hundred within the next week or two. We are the largest operator and we have, over, in Michigan itself, we have over thirty-one locations and about eighteen currently under development. The Detroit metro area is really a target market for us. We have a lot of activity going on, certainly in kind of the northern metropolitan area. So I have projects, the two projects here in Shelby Township, Chesterfield Township, Macomb Township, Harrison Township, Mount Clemens, Fraser, Sterling Heights. So we're, we're very active here. We should actually be seeing a number of these projects go under construction within the next six months or so. One of the things that is unique to Mr. Carwash, a lot of car washes have it now, but we were one of the first in the industry to unveil the Unlimited Wash Club. And it's essentially a membership program that allows you to play, pay a flat monthly fee and you can wash your vehicle as often as you like. But what is unique to us is because of the size of our organization, you could take your car from California to Arizona to Minnesota to Michigan to Pennsylvania, down to Florida. Any of those locations that have a Mr. Carwash, your membership will work at that location. I also mentioned we are owners and operators. There are no franchisees, so these are corporately managed stores. We enter into either purchase agreements or long-term leases and, you know, it is our intent to operate within the community for the foreseeable future. As water is our kind of largest utility that we use, we're very conscious of it. We have a team down in Tucson where we're headquartered. That's all they do. They formulate all of our chemistry. They're working with vendors to determine how can we get, you know, additional equipment that just conserves the water. So one of the things that we do in all of our stores is we install a reclaim system. You can see on the, the image there, effectively the reclaim system is a series of tanks as well as some equipment in our mechanical room and that captures all of that wash water. It runs it through the system, it cleans it and it allows us to reuse it into the wash process. That reclaimed water is used for about fifty percent of the overall wash process. We do some additional things, you know, to help sound and energy usage. As an example, the blowers at the end of the tunnel, those all have air gates, so when there's not a vehicle there, it shuts off. The motor is kind of running in the background, but you're not pulling all of that air in, so that helps keep the sound down, helps reduce energy. So with, to the site itself, as the chair had mentioned, it's on Van Dyke Road, just south of Twenty-six Mile, next to an AutoZone. Here's our site plan. Does this show up on your monitor?
Yes.
It does, okay, perfect. So I'll just take you through how, how this kind of operates. So plan east, so the, the right side of your screen, you would enter off of Van Dyke. You would drive straight into our POS lanes. We have three lanes there. The lane closest to the building is our retail lane, so that would be for customers that aren't members. The reason we have a dedicated lane for them is because we understand that this can be, you know, this is a high-traffic business and kind of throughput is important. We don't want to back up onto roads like Van Dyke. So by putting all of those retail customers into one lane, they can kind of stack up and then our Unlimited Wash Club members can just pull right through. About eighty percent of our business is Unlimited Wash Club members. As I said, that's that subscription program. So when you sign up for UWC, you get a tag on your vehicle. It's an RFID reader. So you're going to pull up to that point-of-sale system, that RFID reader is going to read that tag. The gate opens up, you drive around through, enter the tunnel. When you get to the front of the tunnel, there's going to be a customer service associate who's waving you in to guide you onto that conveyor belt. Once you hook onto the conveyor, it just kind of pushes you through the wash process and then you come out the, again, the plan, I think it's true east, but on the right side of the tunnel. When you exit the tunnel, you've got a decision point to make. You can either leave and go to the left or you can go to the right, re-enter the site to the self-serve vacuums. And then when, obviously you finish with the vacuums, you'll exit back out onto Van Dyke. One of the things that is fortunate about a system like ours, that conveyor system, we can control the speed. So if we ever found that, hey, traffic is, is becoming an issue, we're starting to see some backup, we can increase the speed, move those vehicles through quicker. Couple of changes that we made to the site plan, working with staff. At, at one point, our original site plan had vacuums on the kind of far west side of the site, closer to the residential homes. There was additional parking there. Staff had indicated some concerns with that. So we listened to those concerns. We moved the, all of the vac stalls closer to Van Dyke. We have the vac producer, which is at the far end of the site, to get that as far away from the residential homes as, as we possibly could. I think at one point, the trash enclosure was in the front yard. We've moved that to the, to the rear yard as well. You can see the building elevations. These have been upgraded from our prototypical materials, so you'll have more brick, stone and, you know, our prototypical has CMU units, you know, concrete masonry units. And so in this case, again, you can see that that's upgraded. The point-of-sale canopy matches the building with the stone at the base and brick up the pylons. And then I wanted to address a couple of comments that staff had made in their report. One of the comments that staff had suggested is that because this is a special land use, that there should be some consideration to potentially increasing the landscape buffer. I just did, wanted to call out that the landscape buffer that we have provided is actually between thirty-two and thirty-eight feet. It varies because you can see there, there's kind of some curvature in that. It's not just a straight line across the back. So we have exceeded the twenty-five-foot requirement. And then the other point is the building itself is actually set back a hundred and ninety feet from the residential homes. It's a hundred feet to that first asphalt kind of drive line. Hundred feet to here? Sorry, it's a hundred feet to here and additional ninety feet here. So from this back property line to the building, we have a hundred and ninety-foot setback. So, you know, our ask would that, would, would be that that's deemed acceptable. There was a comment about the site plan wall. So again, because we're against a residential zoning district, we have to have a concrete masonry wall along the back of the site, which we have provided. However, in order for me to clad that wall in materials that are the same as the building, I have to gain access to those residential properties because I can't, there's no way I can put brick or stone on that wall if I can't get back there. And I have no legal right to do that right now. There's no easements. There's nothing that allows me to get back there. So why, what I would propose is that you allow us to do a double-split-face CMU wall. So it looks similar to what's in the image right now. That type of wall would have that split-face exposure on both sides and after consulting with my construction team, they tell me that that could be constructed entirely from our side of the property. And then the other piece is on this wall, again, because of all of that landscaping, at least from the Mr. side of the project, highly unlikely that you'll see it. So we think that this is kind of a compromise. It still gives it an upgraded appearance from a traditional just CMU smooth-face wall, but doesn't require the difficulty in navigating through easements with neighbors and things like that. There were a couple of comments on site lighting. I wanted to just point out that all of our site lighting is full cutoff and it does meet the foot candle requirements at all of the districts, both commercial districts on either side of us and the residential district to the rear of us. There was a question about hours of operation for lighting. We typically like to keep all of our site lighting, point-of-sale canopy lighting, vacuum lighting on throughout the evening, you know, overnight. I understand that there may be some concerns with that, so I'm certainly open to kind of having a dialogue and, and figuring out what is appropriate for this site. And then there was a comment about the photometric plan not meeting the zoning ordinance. We did get that updated. That was sent over to Julie late this afternoon. Obviously, she'll review it to make sure, but we do believe that it is in compliance. And then the final thing that I had on here was there was a comment about the attendant shelter not being large enough for an excessive, it's not being excessively large. I did talk with my architects. A couple of things that they noted to me is that the attendant shelter is not a required component. So if we were to just remove it completely, then we suddenly become in compliance. We put it out there because obviously it can get hot in the summer, it can get cold in the winter. So we're trying to give employees an area of refuge that's close to the point-of-sale canopy, but employees are also able to go into the office space that we have, which provides the same kind of experience facilities as that attendant hut. So with that, that's all that I have. My civil engineer is here. I think, believe she has a few supplementary comments to add.
Hi, good evening. Erin McMackin with Stonefield Engineering and Design, five-five-five South Old Woodward, Suite Twelve-L in Birmingham, Michigan. You know, Chris gave normally my typical presentation, running you through the Mr. Carwash brand, how the site operates. Just a few of the comments that I wanted to address more so from the engineering side that were listed in the recommendations, one being to list the site area on the plans. It is indicated in our land use and zoning table, but we can certainly add a bolder call-out that indicates the size of the site. There's a comment on the wetlands on site. There are wetlands, however, an Eagle permit is not required. They're not regulated wetlands, but we did reach out to Eagle to obtain a letter of no objection, just to confirm that and provide that to the township. Providing warning strips at the sidewalk at the driveway entrance, we can certainly add those. We will defer to the road commission. I know M.D.A. prefers that you do not provide the warning strips, so we'll provide them, but we will also confirm with the road department. And last two comments, just briefly, would be... And last two comments, just briefly, would be in regards to fire. We provide a turnaround area at the rear of the site, near the trash enclosure. That acts as a turnaround area for the trash truck, as well as a turnaround for the fire access. It's shown as 15 feet wide, and we'll be increasing that to 20 to comply with the fire lane requirements, as well as adding a hydrant at the rear of the site. We are looping a water main between our neighbors, completing that water main connection at the rear of the site. So, we'll tap the hydrant off of that proposed main to comply with the fire hydrant spacing requirements. And if there's any questions in relation to the site plan or engineering items, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of comments. Chris, want to come back up for a second? You talked a lot about the rendering that you have, the upgraded material for the car wash, but you didn't really address the overriding issue of, you're requesting a rezoning from C1 to C2. So, I'm going to have to ask you, is currently it's C1, correct?
Correct.
And it was C1 when you bought it? Have you bought it yet?
If not, closed on the property.
Okay. So, it's C1. You knew it was C1 when you went to buy it. So, can you explain to me why you, as a developer, cannot, or not you, but a developer, could not develop this as C1 current zone?
Well, I can't speak for other developers. I can speak for me as a car wash developer. And obviously, it doesn't work for my zoning, which is why we're here. You know, that area of the city for us is attractive because there, you know, when we're looking for a site, what we look for are areas of traffic, areas of, and primarily areas of retail. Obviously, that location has both of those things. And so, again, as we're growing that network out around kind of this north, northeastern area of the Detroit metro area, those are the sites that we're looking for. And so, that's why this particular area was attractive to us.
Maybe I didn't ask it the right way. You have C1 to the south of you, C1 to the north of you, C1 to the east of you, and then residential to the west. Can this property be developed as C1?
Presumably, yes.
It probably can't, because it's C1 all around you. So, that's one of the aspects we have to look at, is does rezoning to C1 fit in the area? Now, you provided two documents, a trip generation memorandum, and then a noise impact analysis. I just want to go to the noise impact analysis for a minute. I'm certainly no noise expert. I'm not an audiologist or anything, but I can tell you, I look at this, and for instance, you've got on page 10, project impacts, long-term operational noise impacts. This is your document. Very first sentence, "The proposed car wash operations could affect existing off-site sensitive land uses." I would argue that a residential property to the west is an off-site sensitive land use. You've even acknowledged it in your first sentence of your document. There's going to be 16 vacuum stations that would generate operational noise. I don't know what definition of operational noise is. I know noise when I hear it.
Sure.
Maybe that's what this is. Then you go into this obvious technical about a turbine would generate a noise level of 74.9 decibels at 10 feet. I'm not an expert at this, but I can tell you, when you look at all of this, when I look at all of this, and look at the noise, the off-site sensitive land use, and what you have said, 74.3 decibels, 78.7 at 25 feet, okay, that all sounds, engineering-wise, whatever. The noise level currently right now, at the decibel level there right now, is zero. So, what you're doing is you want to add all of these, this noise level, to this property, which is going to impact the residential property to the west. That's a concern I have. Even with some of the adjustments you've made, I still believe, and you've acknowledged in your project impact statement you gave us, it's going to, it could affect existing off-site sensitive land uses. So, when I look at that, and when I look at the C1 zoning all around you, and I think your admission that it, in all likelihood, could be developed to C1, I'm looking at it not necessarily what works for Mr. Mr. Car Wash. I'm looking at it what works for the township in the zoning area, in the surrounding property. That's just me.
Sure.
Other commissioners may feel differently, and they'll have a chance to chime in here too. But that's where I'm coming from when I'm looking at this, okay? Just want to be upfront with you. The property looks great. What you're, what you're proposed looks great. I'm just wondering if it's in the wrong area for this. That's what I'm getting at.
Sure.
Okay. Any other? Go ahead.
May I address the noise comment?
Sure. Go ahead.
So, I think the important thing to note in that study is that the township has a requirement of 65 decibels at that residential property line.
Okay.
That's correct, Julie? Correct. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I looked at it earlier, so I shouldn't be. The decibel level that we're showing, based on this study, is approximately 60 decibels at the property line. So, we meet the zoning ordinance at that residential property line.
Meet the noise part of the zoning ordinance.
Correct.
You don't necessarily meet the C1 zoning ordinance at that.
Correct.
Okay. Point taken. Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
I do.
Go ahead, Raquel.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I too agree with Chairman Turner regarding the noise levels. That does bother me, especially a budding residential. And I understand what you're, and I appreciate what you're saying as far as your chart on page, I believe it is six, the common sound levels and their noises that you've given us. I know you had mentioned 65 decibels, but you're open from the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Friday? Or is it Monday through Saturday?
Monday through Saturday.
Okay. So, that is 13 hours a day, and that's constant noise. It's not intermittent noise, it's constant noise pollution in my eyes. I think you have a great product, a great plan, but I personally feel it just doesn't fit in this location. That is just, and it's hard, and I know, I appreciate how you addressed everything else, but that is my big hang-up. And especially, like I said, with that residential, you know, to the west, that is the problem that I have.
With all due respect, you know, I appreciate that you have that concern, but I feel like you're holding us to an unreasonable standard when we don't, we not only meet the zoning ordinance for noise, we exceed the standard. 60 decibels is quieter than 65. We could have a louder site, and your zoning ordinance would still allow it. So, while I respect the concern, I meet the intent of the code.
I don't see it that way, but, you know, this is 13 hours, nonstop. It's not intermittent, right?
And that's, that's how.
So, the vacuum noise.
I'm sorry. Yeah, let me finish.
And the traffic, and then the exhaust. You know, there is a pretty, I was just at the car wash just yesterday. So, it is pretty loud.
And the way that study is done, though, is it's taken over a 24-hour period, and that's how your noise ordinance typically, how noise ordinances are typically written. I won't speak to yours. But it's an average over the course of the day. And so, during those operating hours, and actually, especially as you get closer to Van Dyke, I think the sound, like the receptor that we had up over at Van Dyke, was upwards of 70 decibels throughout the entire operating period that we would be operating. So, to say that there's no noise on the site today is incorrect. There's a significant amount of road noise that is being taken from that road and pushed through the site. So, again, I can't control that noise. I can only control the noise that's on my site. We do that through mufflers on the vacuum producer. We do that by pushing that as close to Van Dyke as we can. We do, we control the noise through the air gates on the blowers. Again, some of those things, you know, the blowers as an example, if there's not a vehicle there, those aren't running. It's not producing noise. And, again, to hold us to a standard that, you know, when I'm meeting, not only meeting and exceeding the standard, I just don't agree with that. I think that's unfair, when, again, we're approximately 60 decibels at that rear property line.
Okay. Thank you. We can agree to disagree.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
My experience, I live near the site, is there's no less than six car washes within two miles of that location. Couple of them has just underwent extensive renovations, and two of them are actually self-serve capability. And so, I just, I would consider where you're putting it. I don't know if you're going to have the market that you want in that location.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments. You know, obviously, as I said, we're not developers. We're not flipping this project. We're long-term owners and operators. This is a $7 million-plus investment. And, you know, it's a competitive landscape, you know? So, we believe that our product, that we can offer a better product than what's out there. We're willing to put $7 million up to attest to that. So, you know, appreciate the comments, but again, yeah, we're willing, we believe we can succeed here. That's why we're here. That's why we're, you know, willing to make this investment in the community of Shelby Township.
Lisa, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Just to let you know, as a township, and we're not picking on your project, but as a township, we have very few properties left underdeveloped in our township. So, we heavily scrutinize any rezoning that's coming in front of us. And we have an opportunity here to offer our opinions, whether this, it's a wonderful car wash, wonderful concept, but the residents feel we have many car washes in the township now. And I know you have another one, another site, which is probably, will fit at that site with the proper zoning. So, I think the commissioners, I can't speak for everybody, but the vibe of the township and how we view rezoning, and we scrutinize heavily what we're going to bring into the township at this point. And if we don't feel we need it, and the residents aren't asking for it, we're more likely to decline. And that's speaking for me with a few comments that I've received. So, just a general background on the township and how we value our underdeveloped property and our residents, protecting our residents, so.
Good point, Lisa. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? All right, we're going to go to the floor. Before we do that, I'm going to announce, this is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for township board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the township board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The township board will make the final decision on the special land use request. At this time, anybody in the audience who wants to speak for or against this development can come on up, come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and then when you're done, make sure you sign in the sheet, please. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the time to listen to my concerns. I'm the nearby resident who wrote the email to the board that hopefully.
Name and address, sir, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Nick Lane. I live at 56260 Crimson. As I said, I was the resident who sent in the email on behalf of all the nearby neighbors. I spoke with many of them, and they were all concerned with the noises that would be generated by this project. As of currently, I just want to highlight this point, is C1 zoning, the purpose of that is for protection of nearby residential districts and to exclude businesses, which tend to be a nuisance to immediately surrounding residential areas. So, we believe that this constant operation of all this equipment would be, as you said, a continual noise emanating from this to our residential properties and affect our use and enjoyment of that. And one other point that I wanted to bring up is I did look at the master plan for the township. This area is proposed to be mixed residential in the future. Rezoning this to a C2 would deviate further away from the intended use of mixed residential. Furthermore, all the C2 properties are supposed to be located near 23 in Van Dyke area, as shown in the planning, master plan map. So, with that, thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you, Nick. Please sign in. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Come on down, sir. Name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Joe Carpino. I'm a resident of Shelby Township. My address is 56230 Crimson, adjacent to the property, right behind my yard would be the plan. I think what I heard, obviously, was the noise, the noise concern, right? The constant noise, the vacuums, the cars. It sounded like, I think, two lanes, right? Two lanes of cars that would be in our backyard, basically. But I'd like to highlight, I think what I learned was lighting, lights until 8:00 p.m., lights outside. And I think I also saw information about chemicals. So, I have three concerns. I support what Mr. Lane, my neighbor, had shared about the mixed zoning. I don't, I'm not sure I support the reason for rezoning from a C1 to a C2 with our adjacent businesses around. I don't oppose business, but I oppose what's, what's the nuisance, if you will. And I believe I'd like to state my case as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Sign in, please. Anyone else from the, anyone else want to speak? Going once, twice, three times? Back up here. Julie, want to give your report?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman.
Sure.
Like Mr. Campbell indicated, we had a couple of staffs of reviewing the site plan initially with the preliminary review. They received those comments and revised the plan as to what's proposed to you, in front of you right now. Now, just taking a step back, a majority of those parcels in that area are zone C1, and that is the reason why the, you know, the residents have indicated, because of the uses of C1 are not quite as intense as C2 zoning district. Not only are we seeking a rezoning in this, we are also seeking special land use. And I believe many of those, a majority of the special land uses have not been addressed in this case. And, you know, even in the site that we do have C2 in this area, a little bit further north, there was a lot of negotiations with that development that came. So, with that being said, it's a great project. It's just, I don't believe that it's in the area where it belongs, based on the master plan as well. As Mr. Lane indicated, it is master planned for mixed residential.
All right. Thank you, Julie. Chris, want to come back up? Get back to something I said earlier. We're going from C1 to C2. And my opinion, I think it can be developed as C1. I have not heard from you about any hardship that would prohibit a developer from developing that as C1. You've got the stores around you developed. Obviously, it's not going to be able to be developed as C1 for a car wash, so that's not a determination. The determination is, does it fit in the area? Is there a compelling interest and a compelling need for us to go from C1 to C2? I don't see that. You, when Raquel was addressing you, you talked about we're, you don't want to be held to a higher standard, different standard. Well, the standard is C1 versus C2. Can it be developed as C1? Yes, it can. So, there is no real need, compelling need, to go to C2. That's a standard that I believe the commission's looking at. And in your opening remarks, you talked about how you can go across country to all these different car washes and be an unlimited member. You can also go from 25 to 24 to 23 to 22 to 21 to Hall Road to Shaner to Van Dyke and find a car wash, too. Maybe not necessarily a Mr. car wash, but there is an abundance of them around. I know last time we had the discussion, you said this is an unsaturated market. I don't know if I agree with that, but that's neither here nor there, but it is something that was said. But again, we're getting into, can it be developed as C1, and is there a reason for it to be rezoned? I don't see it. I don't believe, from what I've heard from the commissioners, I've heard that they see it. We'll find out. But it's nothing against what you're proposing. It's just the area where you're proposing it, as we see it, I believe. Okay?
And I understand, you know, I've been doing this long enough, I know you're not picking on me. I know it's not personal.
Right.
If you'd allow me, though, Aaron does have some comments.
Sure, yeah. Go ahead, yeah.
With respect to the zoning.
Thank you. So, just wanted to kind of bring it back to, we're requesting a conditional rezon, not a traditional rezon. And I think the township has a lot of power in that scenario of a conditional rezon to really protect the residents versus what could go in there by right tomorrow. You know, it is C1, any, you know, shopping center, like the shopping center to the south of us. If you look at that aerial, they have a 25-foot buffer to those residents. That's it. Parking lot, drive aisle, 25 feet from that property line. You know, we have our trash enclosure about 40 feet from the property line, but any car wash activity is over 100 feet away from the residence. And we are planting a forest back at the rear of the site. You know, not only do we have that six-foot masonry wall, but there's an existing four-foot berm that we're keeping, and then we're planting six-to-eight-foot evergreens all atop of that berm. and then we're planting six-to-eight foot evergreens all atop of that berm. And that does a lot for, you know, not only the visual screening, but the noise screening as well. And, you know, Chris was correct, the noise level on the site, it's not quite zero. Van Dyke is a highly trafficked road. It's probably seventy to eighty decibels, and that's not just during the daytime hours, that's through the night as well. There's traffic on those roads. And the site right now is an open field, so those residents are just looking at Van Dyke, hearing Van Dyke. And I think the conditional rezon really offers the township an opportunity to really get things that are above and beyond its standard ordinance requirements. And I really think that we've shown an effort over the past six-plus months in modifying the site plan. I believe we had twenty-five vacuums initially shown, brought it down to fifteen. I've never seen a car wash user have that low a vacuum, so Mr. Car Wash is really putting their best foot forward and really trying to be a good neighbor to come into this site. And just in addition to that, there is a C2 site just one parcel away from us. And I know in 2016, in Julie's letter, it says that this entire corridor of Van Dyke was brought into the downtown district, 2016, which would, we thought, you know, promote commercial developments along this corridor. And one of the uses that's in the mixed residential is automotive, which wouldn't be permitted in C1. But the master plan does permit automotive. So C2 does bring it in line with the master plan. And again, you know, conditional rezon can really help the residents and the township more than just C1.
Okay, thank you. Julie, you want to comment about the, some of the upgrades, I guess you can call them, they've done to this to try to minimize some of the problems that might come with this if it was just rezoned?
Well, they meet the standard. They meet the standard requirements. So if I want to take it back to the Taco Bell site, there is over two-hundred-and-sixty feet between the residential property to the Taco Bell site itself. In addition to that, there is landscape screening on the Taco Bell site as well. So there is that detention pond that is, is back there. So, and we also negotiated the hours of operation on that as well. Initially, they came in and wanted to do twenty-four hours, and we said no. Now, to me, in my opinion, I don't think a Taco Bell drive-through is as, as much of a nuisance as a car wash. That is just my opinion. But with that being said, it's mixed residential. That is the master plan, so it's any type of residential, and not commercial, any type of commercial. So our, our, that corridor of Van Dyke, yes, we did expand the DDA district in that for commercial dis, for commercial zoning. It used to be just in our downtown twenty-four and Van Dyke area, and then we took it all the way down to the limits of Shelby Township to the south, and also to the limits on the north. So commercial does, you know, does encompass the entire portion of Van Dyke, but the heavier use commercials are at the immediate intersections in more so twenty-three mile.
Okay. Yeah, I think I was just reading the first paragraph in the master plan compatibility. It says acceptable uses include office, general retail, automotive service businesses.
Right. So that's why the commercial zoning district, that's why there's an auto zone. Automotive services didn't, not necessarily mean car washes.
Thank you.
So again, it gets back to, you know, you're, as a applicant, you've come to us as the commission and asked us to consider a rezoning to a more intense use from C1 to C2. Lisa mentioned that we have limited properties left in the township, and when we talk about rezoning them, we look closely and seriously at them to make sure that what we do fits with the master plan and does not cause hardship for the area. And we're talking primarily residences living on the west. Again, I have not, myself, heard a compelling reason why we should go from C1 to C2. There's not a hardship other than I can't build a car wash. That's not a hardship to re, to rezon the property. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. And again, I'm, I'm not the landowner. I can't speak to that. I can't, I don't know how long they've tried to sell that property to another user or get a less C for it. I don't know if it's been vacant for fifty-two years or a month. You know, what I know is that we're under contract to develop it as a car wash. That's, that's where we're here. You know, again, bringing, going back to the noise and the concern about the residents. I hear it. I meet the standard. I'm at sixty decibels. So I, I guess I don't, I'm not able to put those two things together when I'm meeting the standard. You know, there sounds to be, I've heard a couple of people say, well, we have a number of car washes. It's my understanding, I'm not an attorney, so I would look to your township attorney, but it's my understanding that Michigan case law is pretty clear, you know, competition is not a reason to approve or deny a project. You know, we believe that we can be successful with the car washes that are here in town and the greater community.
And I don't think we're looking at you to try to limit your competitiveness through the zoning. What we're looking at is, you keep saying you meet the standard. I don't want to argue with you on it, but what is the standard, is the noise standard for C1? You might meet the noise standard for C2, but that's if we rezon it. And again, I have not heard as one commissioner, a compelling reason why we should grant you a rezoning of the property just because you want to build a car wash. If there was some hardship on the property where it couldn't be developed, that would be something different. There isn't anything that I've heard. Nothing that's been presented.
Sure.
That's my point. Anybody else have any questions they want to ask? Petitioner? None? Okay. You go, you can sit down, Chris.
Thank you.
Taking a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Planning Commission's recommendation must be based on the following standards. The compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. Planning Commission may recommend approval, disapproval, or we can table this to receive, with the information we've received this evening. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chair.
Raquel, go ahead.
I move to recommend denial to the Township Board for conditional rezoning and site plan special land use twenty-four dash twenty-one for Christopher Campbell, CWP West LLC, five-six-one-five-seven Van Dyke Avenue, parcel number twenty-three dash zero-seven dash zero-four dash two-seventy-eight dash zero-fifteen, located south of Twenty-Six Mile Road on the west side of Van Dyke Avenue. Proposed rezoning from C1 local retail business to C2 linear retail business and special land use for Mr. Car Wash Auto Wash Facility based on the following. Number one, the applicant has not shown that the proposed use will not adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood and be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the surrounding neighborhood and applicable regulations of the zoning district in which it is to be located. Number two, applicant has not shown that the proposed use is of a nature that will make vehicu, vehicular and pedestrian no more hazardous than normal for the district involved. Number three, applicant has not demonstrated that the parcel cannot be developed as zoned C1. Number four, the proposed use may adversely impact the spirit and the public health, safety, welfare of the residents and/or will interfere with or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings or unreasonably affect their value. Number five, applicant has not shown that the proposed use is designed such that it will not be a nuisance to the occupants of other nearby uses permitted, such as the single-family to the west neighborhood. Number six, the proposed use may not relate harmoniously, harmoniously with the physical and economic aspects of adjacent land uses. Number seven, applicant has not shown that the proposed use will cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood in which is to be located, and that it will not be detrimental to existing and, and any other permitted land uses in the zoning district.
Sir, a second?
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Snyder. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRae?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Motion carries. A motion is denied. Under old business is site plan twenty-two dash zero-one, Alex Shunia for Game On Burgers. Four-five-eight-seven-five Mound Road, located north of West Utica, west of Mound Road. Site plan extension for an outdoor patio.
Good evening. My name is Earl Stenozzi. I'm one of the owners of Game On Burgers for five-eight-seven-five Mound Road. In front of you guys, we're, there was some kind of miscommunication with finishing some of the zoning for the patio.
The outdoor patio, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Julie, you want to go ahead?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. This site plan for an outdoor patio at Game On Burgers, located on Mound Road, north of M fifty, M fifty-nine there.
Yes.
Was approved back in January of 2022. Once it's approved by the Planning Commission, they have two years to start the project and obtain site plan approval. I believe the project is already, the patio is already installed. So they're just asking for an extension of the site plan. There was two minor comments that they needed to address on the site plan before they received approval. So we were in close contact with the applicant, but failed to get that site plan in time before it expired. So technically, they don't have an approved site plan at this point, so that's why we're back here. Since the zoning ordinance regarding outdoor patios has not changed, I would not be opposed to extending this for the next six months. Or what did I say here?
Three month, three months?
Did I say three months?
Yeah, okay. Anyone have any questions? Motion wasn't, being in order?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Snyder.
Move to extend site plan twenty-two zero-one Alex Shunia for Game On Burgers, four-five-eight-seven-five Mound Road, parcel number twenty-three zero-seven-nine-zero-zero-five-three-three-zero-five, located north of West Utica Road, west of Mound Road, proposing an outdoor patio for three months to expire on January ninth, 2025, based on the applicant submitting revised plans addressing all department and Planning Commission comments.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Snyder, seconded by Commissioner Oppone. Any questions? Hearing none. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRae?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Motion carries. Here, all set?
Thank you.
Thank you. Planning Directors' Report. Julie, anything?
Um, just one item, sir. September twenty-third Planning Commission meeting will be canceled due to lack of submissions.
Okay, so noted. Anybody else want to speak? Sir, you want to come back down, or you're all set? All right, nobody else, so, Mr. Snyder?
Chair, move to adjourn.
Moved to adjourn. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.